We stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the capital outlay and budget presentation with Mr. Bliss.
Good evening. Can you all hear me all right? Okay. So I'm presenting on the 2022 23 capital outlay project. And facilities overview. It's good. Thank you. All right, we're going to take a look at the project scope, budget, schedule, and look at some images. So the scope of work is more or less an extension of last year's capital outlay project. To replace lighting in the hallways and adjacent spaces with new LED light fixtures. Alternates would include lighting in adjacent hallways and lighting in the gymnasium. The overall budget will be less than $100,000 and the schedule will be completed within one school year. Here's a photo of our existing T eight fluorescent light bulbs that require maintenance and have high energy usage. Here's another photo in the gymnasium of fluorescent light bulbs. And here's a photo of the new LED light fixtures that match the existing lighting within the district and offer better energy savings. And that's what I have for the outlay presentation. Any questions?
Jay, just one question. And maybe Jeff can can answer a little bit more of this as well, too, but there's possibility the following year going up to $250,000 capital outlay projects.
Yeah, Jeff would probably he's been involved more in those conversations.
You don't have that answer, Chad.
I don't have that answer, but I would be all for it.
Yeah, I want to talk about that a little bit later in the meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. All right, so I'd like to roll right into the facilities overview. So the things that we've been up to in buildings and grounds in 21 22 focus on the continual effort on COVID relating cleaning sanitation and PPE distribution. Assisting with the design and planning of the upcoming capital improvement project, including the disposal of unused stored items and the reorganization of space in the middle high school basement. So some of the items in the capital improvement project include equipment that goes into the mechanical rooms. There's an extension of the mechanical room in the basement. Kind of had to reorganize some space and then possibly have some some added space for storage of of items depending on how the project goes. Development of a department equipment replacement plan to project future needs and allow for a more consistent allocation of district district funds. And one fun item was an acquisition of our new vet track ball diamond groomer, which will allow for more efficient use of time and labor. Any questions on what we've been up to this year so far? Excellent. Subjects objectives for the 22 23 year. Big focused on assisting with support and coordination for the capital improvement and outlay project. Added emphasis on upgrades to floor care products, practices and systems, and continue to clean up dispose of and or sell unused district equipment. At this time, there are no new anticipated staffing needs. And there are no major repairs planned for the upcoming year, although I may have to look into some roofing repairs at some point here. Any questions, comments on on anything I laid out there?
Chad, is there new vent track ball diamond groomer what you use to upgrade that field up by the road on the school view by the?
Yeah, the one that yeah, so the one that town rec uses over here by the bus garage, we fit that a few times. This summer really did a great job, really dressed it up quick. So yeah, that's what we use there. That's what we plan on using for all of ours. Really, it allows us to to take four to five guys doing hand labor in the spring and spread that work out to work on mulch beds, lay some top soil down and really have one person on a machine that's doing, you know, three other people's workload. It's really exciting, so. I love it. Plus, it really we we had a mower, one of our wide area mowers go down rather than spending a boatload of money on a new one. This product also has attachments that can go on to it. So for much less price, we we bought a mower to go on there. So it's now pulling double duty for us.
That is exciting.
Very.
Thanks, Mr. Bliss.
Anything not to talk about roof leaks, Jeff? Thanks, guys.
So Mr. Servoni, you're next.
Good evening, Board of Ed Superintendent. Thanks for having us here today to present our budgets. The most fun part of this really is when we talk about all the cool stuff we're really doing in our schools, but we'll start with the number piece. One of the things we noticed this year was really an increase in supplies across the across the boards. And at the middle school, we're at about a $1,300 total increase in our budget. And that that really is just the increase in the cost of supplies in every department that we that we have in our school. And really not too bad when I really think about how much things have gone up, but that's about where we're at and and working with Laura, we think it could be doable to meet those needs. So we're excited to keep up great programming with really just a slight increase. Um, so our focus when we work on this in the middle school, and I know this is a catch all term, but we really want to maintain all the great programs that we have. And we do have a bunch of great ones in the middle school. One of the new initiatives that we're working on is MTSS, which is a multi-tiered system of supports. It's something we've always done probably unofficially, and now we're really sinking our teeth into it. Mrs. Gregory, Mr. Lyons, we're, you know, at the secondary level are focused on really doing everything we can to support our students at every level and really making sure we don't miss any steps along the way. So it's a great program. It's in its infancy. We are continuously training. We meet on it. We are working with our teachers. Teachers are embracing it because it allows them a lot of tools to work with students. It allows us a lot of data or data to make sure we're doing everything we can before we jump to a next step. So that's a real exciting piece that's happening. I know at the middle level, I know at the high school level, and I'm pretty sure it's a district wide initiative. So it's this is something that I think you'll hear more about as a board. It is pretty exciting that we're that we're moving in this direction. One of the one of the great things that came out of you know, trying to help students and support them is we have an after school enhancement program and we were able to find money to add a teacher to each level. So we have a middle school academic academic enhancement program. We also have a high school. Normally, that's one teacher for all the students that go there, and that can vary in amount, but we now have two teachers. We try to get a math and an ELA teacher, English teacher in there so that they can focus on those core subjects. And we're finding great success. Kids are going. Typically, it's connected to our probation policy, but we also have it open to any student who's interested. And any student who may not participate in extracurriculars or athletics, you know, clubs and that kind of thing, they're also welcome. And at a certain point, we really we kind of forced them to go. And we've seen great success at the middle level there. So thank you for finding money to add a teacher to that. Another great thing we started this year, and I know Mr. Sartisio kind of pushed us to start this cycle. We really did have not done this. I mean, this is my ninth year at Eden, and we really never had an equipment rotation cycle. We kind of did things as needed. So it really made us as principals, but also department chairs really look at their equipment needs. Kind of the status that they're currently at. And you know, when do we need to start thinking about replacing this stuff? Let's not be surprised. Let's not rush and and jump to buy stuff. And so we have I think four years out, maybe more that we focused on what types of equipment do we need to look at and replace? And this is already in action. It our tech department just replaced the jointer, which pretty much squares the edge of a board. Very expensive piece of equipment, the one we had, I think, was 50 years old. We were able to buy science tables through this process. Ours were just just aged for our fax class home ec. We bought a bunch of mixers. You know, those mixers are three, 400 bucks a piece. And they have been in that classroom forever. So we have done that. And what's what's great about the middle and high school, because we do share some teachers. I'll focus on one piece. Mr. Lyons focuses on another. And we're able to combine forces and almost you know, do double the the benefit to a lot of these programs. One of the one of the big things, and this has been going on for years, is we bought, I think, 14 sewing machines for our family consumer science classes. Our machines were ancient. They were breaking constantly. The the cost to repair them was very expensive. So we bought a bunch of those at a reasonable price, replaced them all. Last but not least, we're able to replace some art tables. And this process goes on. So next year, we already know the stuff we want to buy. Teachers are excited. Departments are excited. Our kids have great stuff, great equipment to to use in their classes. So that's kind of the budget side of things. Any questions on any of those budgetary items? Lot of fun stuff happened at the middle level. We had a really great in-person literacy night. I think we had about 65 total students, grade six through eight. You know, this is where we do the book bingo. We have a book fair. We have a book tasting. So you get to try different books. We gave a bunch of books away. We we partnered with the Eden Library here in town. That was like a six to eight 30 Thursday night event, but it was well well attended. A lot of parents came to it. We did a great make ornaments and give them to the nursing home. It's always a fun thing. Students take a little wooden ornament. They decorate it however they want. And then we bring it to the local nursing home and we pass it out to the residents and they absolutely love it. We take pictures. We celebrate it. I hope you guys look at the radar report and see all that stuff because we try to promote all the great student stuff in the in the radar reports. We know everyone gets it. Math and Science Night that we work with Fredonia State on in person. Another well attended, great evening. One of the focuses that we've been trying to do, too, is this mental health piece. And we had a I think Lori Gregory might have brought Molly Kennedy or Mr. Sartisio did to our attention, but Molly Kennedy has this 30 year career of being, you know, an athlete, a triath, you know, a triathlon or triathlete, author, teacher. Very motivational. We got her to come in. She did a middle school program and a high school program. One morning we had like an hour middle and then an hour high school. And what a great hour of just positive message of mindset and triumph and working hard. I mean, I was sucked into her program. The students were they were crowding the stage when she finished. So we've we've been able to bring cool things like that to our students. We've already had two in-person dances, which last year we couldn't have. So that's real exciting, especially if you're a middle school student. If you've ever been to one of those dances, they're just a big pile of young kids just mushed together and kind of just popping around. You guys probably all remember being there. I was there with all these guys. And last but not least, we had a really neat offer from the district attorney's office to have an assisted assistant district attorney. This was a freebie, which was cool. We always like when they say we'll do this for free. Come in and talk about cybersecurity and mental health. And when you're at the middle level, not so much cybersecurity, but a lot of cyber bullying, cyber, you know, that kind of stuff goes on quite a bit. And the ADA had a great message to these students that was, I thought, well received. And she threw in a nice piece on mental health, which is something we're always focused on now in schools. So that was for for being March, we've done a lot of really neat stuff at the middle level that I'm proud of. And I'm looking forward to some of the stuff we have planned for the remainder of the year and in the years to come. Questions on any of that?
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for supporting us. We appreciate it.
You're always you're always welcome to clap at these meetings. Don't hold back.
Now we'll have Mr. Lyons present budget.
Except for Mr. Lyons, you don't need to clap for him. He's got to earn it.
First of all, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Sartisio and the board for allowing me to come to speak. Many of the things that I'm going to discuss here are similar and echo what Mr. Servoni said, especially about financing and budget. And one of the main reason is is we do our strategic rotating equipment cycle. We have to work to we have to collaborate to make sure we can maximize those classes that do have the overlap such as fax, such as tech. So any of those, we want to maximize it, and especially one of the first points you'll see here. We have noticed an uptick in inflation, which I know many of you have as well. So we're trying to get ahead of it and having the equipment replacement cycle that I worked with Mrs. Feldman on is allowing us to get ahead of it before some of these items increase. So we know what basically the needs are. We strategically space them out. And of course, there are sometimes there was like a heat pump that went in the science department. We have to move on. But this allows us to work with the department chairs so they know what's coming. What they told me is they appreciate that even though we might not be able to get a piece of equipment this year, they know it's planned out. We're actually out five years. We could probably even go six. And if we need something now, we can simply go to them. Hey, can we go one more year? And them knowing ahead of time just makes them feel a part of the process and they really appreciated that we we really dug into this. And it's it's fluid and we have to make changes as we go, but they have communicated with me. They really appreciate that opportunity. And I want to say thank you for supporting us with that equipment line because it's really helping for us to enhance our programs. We've been able, as Mr. Servoni said, we've been able to work with Mr. Bliss and Mrs. Feldman. We got table saw last year. Mr. Sartisio saw that. He knew about it. Something it stops so it doesn't cut a kid has a sensor. The sewing machines, we're able to do a cost effective. We're actually Mrs. Wazak, she's great at this. She find found ways to get them cheaper. I know Mrs. Feldman, we always like that. Refrigerator. They were just thrilled. They couldn't even believe it was here. They almost didn't believe it. So I do want to really say how much we appreciate it. Folding goals, that isn't a typo. They're the goals that fold and and PE. They really, really appreciate it. So it's allows us to strategically use money that's allocated to us to maximize the benefit kits. And it's really they're noticing it. The kids, hopefully, the students are recognizing, you know, we're trying to enhance what we have and make even better. And we're just really trying to do it in a cost effective strategic way. So I really wanted to just make a point on that, and I appreciate you guys supporting us with with that equipment line. The second thing is I want to talk about some of the successes that we've been having in our building. Our mock trial in the pool play finished second place. I want to send a shout out to Mr. Huber and Mrs. Zittle. They put in a lot of time to help that team to really be successful. They beat schools like St. Joe's. I'm trying to think, maybe even Kenesius. I mean, it was quite an accomplishment. I wanted you guys to be aware of that. Our girls basketball team won their the sectional championship. I didn't realize it was only our third one. It was a big deal and and I'm really proud of them. And this goes back two years for both the mock trial and basketball to keep it going during the pandemic. And I'm really proud of both of those. Mr. O'Hare and Ms. Herc on that for for coaching. And also our guys and dolls. What a success. I went to the show on Saturday night. It was a really active crowd. I was told it was the most active crowd of engaging. It was really fantastic. And there was a purpose why I put those three there. And the reason is, is I really want to emphasize that I feel our students can get there from here. They don't need to go to another school. They can do it here. And things like that, that well-rounded education, which this is, and you guys supporting us in so many different ways. I really think that's what makes us special here at Eden. So I really want to stress that. We have some exciting things, and I don't know if Connor is going to talk about it later. Preparing for the junior and senior proms, which we're having, we're going full bore. We have those secure. Really excited about that and also preparing for a traditional graduation. We've been working with that also with our senior awards breakfast. But we're just really excited to get back to normal as much as we can. Seeing their their faces here, I really appreciate that. And I just really want to thank the board and Mr. Sartisio for all your support. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you think he earned it?
I think he did.
This is Maxon. Thank you for having me this evening, Mr. Sartisio and members of the board. Really, I'll be talking about some of the things that impact my budget above and beyond the services and programs that my department offers. So first, I talked to you a bit about this last year. We're implementing the Q interactive computer based psychological testing. So it's a technology based testing that allows our psychologists to provide testing to students that increases their productivity, allowing them to transfer right into the reports, the scores from students. And it also gives students a platform that they're more used to for those that wish to do it technology based. We do have paper based options still available to for our students, so that way we can afford either option to our students. Most at this time are doing it through this technology component, which has been a great resource for us. So thank you for supporting that. And then we also are going to bring into that programming speech next year. So that'll be an addition for us. So speech will be able to start using some of that computer based program testing as well. So we're excited to see how that goes. Since this year went so well for our psychologists and using that platform. The other piece that we added that was this year for a partial year, so we haven't been doing this full year. We just actually launched this in about January and Lori Gregory really helped to lift this piece for us, too. We were so excited. It's called the Unique Learning System, and it's specially designed learning opportunities for our students. And it's a vertically aligned curriculum all the way through. So it offers pre K through 12th grade plus transition. We were missing some of those transition components previously and having really secured curriculum around that. So we're really excited to be doing this for our students. That really cool thing about this is too, is that if a student was out for any reason for a length of time, maybe due to an extensive surgery or if the family or care coordinators from the outside agencies want to carry over anything from this unique learning system, they're able to access it at home as well. So it's differentiated. It's individualized for every student in our self-contained programs and our special classes, and it's all cloud based. So the teacher actually pushes those differentiated pieces to our students. They each get their own curriculum based content areas, and then they're able to access that beyond school. So that's a really cool feature of that platform as well. So through this, we're hoping to continue to increase the academic rigor and raise the expectations to provide that standards aligned curriculum and make it accessible to all of our students. We're also working to update and enhance the equipment that's in our sensory rooms across the district. And we're working to continually provide professional development. So as I shared with you last year, we had a member of our department that was trained for CPI, which is crisis prevention intervention. So she does all of our training and district to our teachers, to our aides. Actually, Mary Binkle's whole department took it as well. So that's a really nice feature for our district to have. So we were able to train, I think, about 35 members from transportation and that as well, because they have our students in the morning and in the afternoon for transportation, and some of our students may have issues where they need to be de-escalated in that type of situation. So it's a really nice resource and benefit to our district. And then other opportunities as available, such as the Center for Autism and Related Disabilities, Bosse's trainings and otherwise. Recently, we signed up for trainings for most of our special education teachers and aides to take this Friday. It's an autism and anxiety co-occurrence training, and it was really awesome that we had that opportunity. It's free. And I'm going to allow for consistent training across our district. And we there were so many people that signed up for that training that actually shut the training down, so to speak, with the people that could register because so many people were interested. So we're really excited. Most of our staff got into that training. And we are also providing it in a few rooms like on the smart boards, so that way people who couldn't get in and register can also benefit from that training. I also wanted to share with you just kind of an outlook on where we're at as far as our students who are identified within the district. So last year we were at 240 students and we projected to be around 248 with some students who had graduated as well as for some of our students who may not have qualified any longer because of updated testing and otherwise, we're currently at 231. And then our projected for next year, we're just starting our annual review process now. We're predicting around 212 and then plus or minus, we have our students who will be move-ins and our students who are CPSI. So preschool age that will be moving up. So probably around same that 225, 230. But of course, we'll see more so once we get our preschoolers through our process to determine if they are eligible at the school age level and any incoming students that might move into the district. And this is just continued outlook on where our students are physically, where they physically receive their programs and services. So as you can see, our numbers are relatively consistent between the buildings. You'll see GLP had a little bit of a jump that was our numbers for kindergarten and our current first grade population, which did have bigger numbers that came in at that point, and we had less children in the bubble from second to third grade that went over to EE. So you'll see EE has a decline. That's because we had less students go over from second grade to third grade, and we had more students that had come in at kindergarten. And then we do have one student that's at Erie One Bosse's program, and we have nine students in Erie Two Bosse's through different districts throughout the region. And then in our out of district placements, you can see what our numbers are in the out of district placements such as Randolph, Baker, Summit, CHC, Frontally Place, and Catalation. And then just an update on the special education department, and we are in the midst of that general audit that we are doing. We welcomed a team of three individuals, Danielle O'Connor, Jessica Giugino, and Mary Beth Muldowney. They've been in our classrooms throughout the district and our offices. They've been in our classrooms throughout the district, in our offices, and really just conducting some classroom visits and analysis of program of our systems and having interviews with staff. We gave our staff the message that they should just do what they do every day and just welcome them into their classrooms. So that they can see the awesome things that we do for our students at Eden and for students who cross contract and attend here from other districts. And it just gives them an opportunity to see what our programs are like. And if there's anything that they can afford to us as far as insight or feedback on how to continue to grow and what we're doing really well. Any questions?
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Watson.
I'm here with him too, but I'm just supporting him. You guys heard about our goals and everything when we presented the tech plan. And he's going to do more of the nuts and bolts, how much everything's going to cost.
Thanks, Lori. Thank the board and the superintendent for asking me to come out and spend like the next forty five minutes or so talking about this.
Dylan, cut his mic now.
You guys picked a great time to come for your pig assignment. So when you got, when we had come before and presented the tech plan, we kind of did the outline of what we wanted things to look like and set a plan out so every year we know generally what we need to replace year two, year three, year four. So you can budget for it. You know what's coming out. Lauren knows what's coming in and all that. So this is kind of just the breakdown of it, just an overview, not a very detailed look. But for this year, out of the technology reserve, we're asking for three hundred and forty nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And the breakdown on that is we're going to make the Chromebooks, we're going to swap them out every three years. That's where they should be. If you try and push it years, five, six, they're falling apart, they're breaking down. Kids are frustrated, everybody's frustrated. So we've decided on three years. Every year it's going to be about four hundred. The price goes up, sometimes they come down. So one year it might be four twenty five, another year it might be three ninety. It all really depends on how the numbers fall, but it'll be right around there. Our desktops, laptops, MacBooks, et cetera. Again, we'll be doing about a hundred a year. Some years it might be a little less because we'll be buying more expensive devices. Some years it might be a hundred and twenty, depending on the state bid pricing and what other deals we can kind of work. Copiers, five years. As Laura knows, if you try and push the copiers beyond their limits, people get frustrated real fast. Copiers is a very hot subject with staff. So we talked to some manufacturers, looked at some pricing and stuff. And in five years is where they should be to keep them in a good usable cycle. We'll be doing about seventy year. We have thirty six in the district. The bigger copiers are a little bit more expensive. The office copiers are a little cheaper, but it will break down to be about thirty thousand dollars a year to keep the copiers going. iPads, they last five years. You can even probably get six, but Apple really starts to do some things where it's not supported after year five. They'll say this application doesn't work, you need to upgrade. So we're going to keep them at five years. Right now we have like four hundred and fifty. So we'll be doing about a hundred a year. There's some in there with some grant money and stuff, a couple special sections and things like that. But it'll be right around forty thousand dollars going forward. Servers, infrastructure. That'll be about ten thousand dollars a year and we get around twenty thousand dollars a year aided from the state every year to spend that we get fully reimbursed for it. So that would be an item I would take out of there. It's really not eligible for BOSI's aid, some of the things we do. So that would be a really good use for the local aided line. And then the next big one is the IFPs touchboards, smart boards, however you want to refer to them. They'll last about seven years. We should be doing twenty a year. There's some classrooms that were being replaced and there's still some classrooms that did not have them. So coming this year, we will finish the classrooms that did not have them, they will get them. This number could really sway depending on there's a few areas that you cannot mount the boards on the wall just because it's the classroom is not physically able to. So you have to buy a stand. Those stands are five, six thousand dollars. So might have to spend a little more and get a few less boards, but it should balance out to be about twenty a year going forward for the life of the plan. And then the software and supply budgets have remained the same. I know Kelly's working on some math things with curriculum, but as far as the tech, my side of things, it stayed the same. We didn't do any increases going forward. We are looking at stuff, we did pull usage reports and make sure what we have is actually being used. And then the final thing with the splitting of the position this year between Lori and I, there were some things that we were contracted with Erie One BOSI's to do to provide support. We're taking those things back. It's things I'm very comfortable doing and I've done for my career. So there are some reductions in those services. They were managing our email, our Google Cloud Management. And we also two days a week had a senior land technician here. We do not need that now that the position is split and I can focus on the techie nerdy side of things. And Lori can do all of her fun, cool stuff. So that did help with some savings when Laura can use in some other areas. And the last part, this is a new request to Eden. Under New York State Building Aid, there is a line there that they will fully reimburse us for security cameras. You can do a maximum of thirty five thousand dollars a year and they will fully refund you the following year. It's much like the capital outlay project, you pay upfront and they'll pay you back. It's a great program. I've used it before. They'll allow you two thousand dollars per camera. They'll do the installation, everything. Going forward, there are some blind spots still in some areas that I'm working with the administrators to address. We'll be adding those. And then also there are some cameras that are starting to get a little old. So we'll use that and hopefully that will be just a self funding program going forward, just to take care of it and use the state aid on it. Any questions?
I had a question about replacement of the copiers and the touchboards. Do we have a brand consistent throughout the district? Or are we moving towards one brand of copier and one brand of touchscreen so that they all work the same? And they're all use the same toner? Or are we going to just change every single year, which I would expect would make things more costly, more complicated?
No, definitely not. I'm a, I like to stay uniform. It helps top down toner training support. Right now the copiers are Toshiba. That is dependent heavily on Erie One BOSI's and the bid that they get because it's about fifty five percent off normal pricing that Erie One gets. They've been with Toshiba for ten to twelve years. I don't see it changing. That could change and we're kind of hand strung by that because we do get the aid on it. As far as the touchboards, there was a mix. I am moving forward with one brand just to stay. It's just will help, like you said, for training conformity and things like that. So going forward, as long as that company keeps producing it, we'll stay with that going forward.
Who is that?
That's Vusonic.
Actually, I have a question for the seniors that are here. So are you guys on year three or year four of your Chromebooks right now? Do you guys have your, the same Chromebook that you guys were issued back? So how are they holding up after four years? No, I'm just, you know, we've got, we've got a chance to have some honest input from you.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So three years is good.
Yeah.
And Jack, Ellen and I have been sitting in on the tech committee. And their focus is, is the end goal is when you come into a classroom, you should be able to plug in and basically go. So it doesn't matter what classroom you're going to be in. It's, you're going to walk in and smart board is going to be able to hook up. But right now it's just a mishmash of equipment. So that's the plan moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Iwakos next.
You good?
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Before I start with my athletic presentation, I just wanted to thank Mr. Sartissio and the board for their overall support for athletic programs. Athletics can teach our student athletes many lifelong values like teamwork, responsibility, commitment, discipline, integrity, and respect for self and others. It can also enhance the overall high school experience for our student athletes, like Mr. Lyons said earlier. Students who participate in athletics tend to have a higher GPA, better attendance, less discipline issues, and have a higher sense of school spirit, which improves the overall school environment. This school year, the Eden Central School offered fifty one sports teams. We do combine five with North Collins and one with Go Wanda, various levels, varsity. We sometimes do seven, eight, nine with our numbers and some modified as well. Overall, our numbers, like last year, last time I spoke to everyone at this board, we were in a crazy fall two season. We had a spring, our sports were jumbled, they were all over the place. So our numbers were a little bit up last year in the fall because I added them all together. Because last year you could technically play two fall sports. So that's why they were a little bit higher, our numbers, they were a little bit higher. This year already for spring, we're already at two fifty, over two hundred and fifty student athletes participating. So we're at about forty three percent. So our numbers have increased a little bit. We'll continue to monitor and look at the data like participation rate from year to year. We're also start to monitor from grade level to grade level to see any discrepancies or areas of concern to get a better handle of the numbers for each sports team. That way we know what levels we can offer for our students. This is the good part, I get to brag a little bit about my, our student athletes. One, I always try to say in my newsletters or anything like that, student athletes, students first. We had out of our eighteen varsity teams, fifteen were scholar athlete teams, which is, which is unbelievable. We've had counting fall two and the spring last year, we had nine division league winners. Football last year in the snow, won their division for the first time since two thousand and twelve. Boys volleyball, softball, baseball, girls lacrosse, wrestling. Girls swimming won their division for the first time since two thousand and eleven. Girls cross country and girls basketball, like Mr. Lyons mentioned. Four section six class champions, we had girls volleyball, softball, girls cross country and girls basketball. Runner ups last year with boys volleyball and both girls and boys lacrosse. We had four students compete this, just this year alone and went to the States. GLNs went for cross country in the fall. And we had three wrestlers out of our ten wrestling team went to the stage, which, which is unbelievable. Johnny Vicario was actually seeded fourth in our section tournament, ended up winning it and then getting second in states. Shane Walzak, who's here right now, he also was representing us at States. I know you work hard. And also eighth grader Bryce DeLaPento was there as well. If you haven't seen anything on our Twitter page, we did a nice send off for all our athletes, kind of a victory thing to sending them off. I recommend watching it, it's pretty cool, school spirit wise. What we're working on, we're still working on a program for our coaches to help them out with game day and also with breaking down film. We're looking for, we're in the process of a replacement plan for uniforms. We're a little bit ahead of schedule. So that's continuing to see the nice uniforms too this year. We're also developing a replacement plan like our high school and middle school for our major equipment as well. The last thing that I'm trying to do is gear more towards social media a little bit. Been using Twitter, I'm trying to get into other aspects with the sports boosters. They gave me a program called Gipper, which I've been trying to use, which is excellent for me. I pretty much can go on my phone, they have the templates already there and I can just plug in the scores and I can shoot it out real quick. So it's been great. And the last but not least is this December, which is pretty cool. We had six girls sign their national letter intent together to play at the collegiate level. So I was really proud of them. In conclusion, I believe athletics provides a great education experience for our students. Our student athletes are growing by learning the values of healthy competition, teamwork, goal setting, respect and hard work. Athletics prepares and helps our students become well rounded citizens for our community. Eden's dedicated and hardworking coaches, athletes and parents are the reason why we are a staple sports program in section six. Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, Mr. Iwakos.
Thank you.
And now Mrs. Banko.
Hey, everyone, can you hear me? Okay. So if you'll notice on the agenda, the transportation department was not on the agenda. And that is exactly our goal. Our goal is to bring the kids to school and back home again without kind of being that unseen department. So that being said, we are pretty a low key department. We do have a high expenditure though, and that is on the bus purchases. So we are this year kept keeping with our six to, or I'm sorry, our seven to eight year rotation. One thing we're trying new this year is buying a bus with seat belts in it, the three point seats, seat belts that you're used to seeing in a regular car. We have a wheelchair bus that we're buying with those in it. We're going to try it out, see how the kids do with it and, and kind of move forward. That's kind of the way of the future. And we're going to try one this year and see what we do, we can do with it. And if we need attendance on it, or if the kids are able to adjust the seat belts on their own. Excuse me. The other thing we're looking at this year is for our bus purchases. We're looking at loading and unloading safety, which is our focal point. We have a bus we've purchased the last couple of years with new stop arms that have made it more visible for the passing motorists to see us. We're also purchasing buses this year with safety. Like you know, when you go in the grocery store or the department store and they have the sensor that tells you when somebody's in the door. So we have something similar to that on the buses that we're purchasing. So if a bus happens to close the door too quickly, it is just a switch. So if the bus happens to close the door too quickly, it will stop that. So it opens the door. We're also working heavily on staff development, as Mrs. Maxon mentioned. Working, we're working on CPI, which is crisis prevention intervention. We have reduced our costs on in-house repairs substantially over the last few years. I believe about six years ago, we were at about eighty five thousand dollars for the in-house repairs for equipment contract and repair. And we've dropped that down to about forty thousand. And as far as staffing goes, we are very heavily dependent on whatever our out of district kids need. So we're, our staffing will depend on the out of district needs and but our, our main focus is on safety. And we are always looking for new bus drivers and new bus attendants. So if you know anybody, send them our way. Are there any questions for me? I'm a pretty short presentation. Any questions? Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, budget presentation with Mrs. Feldman.
Well, I want to thank my colleagues. That was a wonderful segue. That was the interesting part of the evening. Sorry, here comes the numbers. So tonight, for the first time, we're going to kind of talk about what the voters are going to be asked to authorize to spend from our reserves. And remember, propositions two and three do not increase your taxes. They are money we have judiciously saved and put away for these replacement programs. We're going to have the first time, we're going to look at the overall budget all put together. And then we're going to finalize as we always do with the budget calendar. So our first second proposition will be the capital reserve for equipment and vehicles. It was originated and established May seventeen, two thousand and sixteen by a vote of the voters in the district. Excuse me, but I got to get rid of this out of my screen so that we can all see. So the Buildings and Grounds Department is looking for a Kaivac restroom cleaner for seven thousand dollars to replace their two thousand and five. to replace their 2005 workman cart to replace their 2008 plow truck for a total of $74,000 for buildings and grounds. The bus garage and maintenance mechanics are looking for storage cabinet cabinets, a tire balancer, and to replace their 1998 roadside repair truck. What is a roadside repair truck? That's when the bus doesn't start, it stalled and it won't start and they come out and they have to jump the battery or there's a flat tire and they have to come out. This is the vehicle they get in this loaded with their tools to come and to assist the drivers and the buses that are broke down on the side of the road. Let's hope it doesn't happen too often and we get a long life out of this vehicle too. And then the replacement plan is looking for four buses for a total of $558,379. The reserve for technology was voter approved May 21st, 2019. And per their equipment replacement plan, they're looking for $349,750 this year. Authorization again to use these funds does not impact taxes and we cannot purchase with these funds without voter authorization. Now we're getting into the real interesting stuff. Try to stay awake. So we're going to go through and we're going to talk, there's three categories. There's general support, there's instructional, and then there's what do they, undistributed. So I'm going to go real slow on the first slide and you'll see as we get further and further along, I'll start to skip some of the columns. So in general support, and by the way, you'll be able to locate this presentation if you really are looking for the numbers, it'll be online, it's online and Board Doc. So if you need to write down numbers for anything, it's there. The Board of Education, sorry to announce to the people at this table, no, you're not getting paid next year as you didn't this year or the year before or ever. But there are expenses that come with the Board of Education, like insurances and preparing of the budget, the voting of the budget that are all captured in this. Last year was $28,506. The rollover budget, we thought it was going to be 29,829. But then because of increased printing costs for the district newsletter and insurance increases, it's gone up to $33,329 for a total increase of $4,823, which looks like a whopping increased percentage wise, but because the numbers are low, 16.92% is just a large percentage. Central administration, that's the district office. And that is going from 305,614 to 312,025, a $6,671 increase or 2.18%. Finance is the business office, the audit, and anything that we hire a consultant for our financial advisor. That is going from 454,000 to 463,000 and $8,779 increase, 1.93%. Legal personnel and public services are going from 121,000 to 124,037,48 increase, 3.10, I promise I'd speed up. Central services, that's our BOSI's computers and all of our buildings and grounds. It's going from 2.4 million to 2.6 million, 193,000 increase, 7.78%. Special items, what the heck are they? Their insurance, their water and sewer bill, our refund on taxes, and our BOSI's administrative and capital costs. Sounds exciting to me. 434,000 up to 503,000, a $69,000 increase, 16.1%. So our total general support for next year is going to go from 3.8 million to 4.1 million, up 7.51%. Are we good? I don't hear any snoring yet, so I think we're doing good. Instructional. Administrative and improvements, that's curriculum, that's all the building offices. That's all the staff that works there. So it's going from 1,060,000 to 1.2 million, up 187,931, 17.72% increase. General education, that's your K through 12 classrooms and the teachers. And this area is going from 8.5 million to 8.8 million, 239,000 or 2.78%. Programs for students with disabilities, I want to slow down just a little bit. So I want to point out a couple of things. It's going to go from 4.2 million to 4.4 million, up 219,000, 5.13%. But any student that is deemed by New York State by their formulas to be high cost, we will receive additional state aid next year to pay for the services that we're offering that student this year. Then we have occupational education, that's BOSI's program for no cosmetology, and I believe there's welding, and then our PTEC courses. It's going from 855,000 up 67,000 to 923,000, 7.9%. And again, we will get an additional state aid to help pay for that next year based on our BOSI's reimbursement costs that will increase our state aid a little bit if this all is spent. Community education, that's going from 34 to 35,000, up 720, 2.09%. School library and information technology. It's going from 879,000, down, down, did you hear that word, down? To 839,000, down 39,000. I'd like to credit Mr. Watson. He's done a great job at containing our costs. And so that's going down 4.54%. Pupil services, pupil services is the guidance department, the nurses, and the sports, those type of things. It's going from 1.7 million to 1.8 million, up 116,000, 6.8% in this budget as presented. So our subtotal for instructional is 17,395,755. Plan to go up 790,996 to 18,186,751 or 4.55%. This is where the kids are. This is where we like to see the money go. And then pupil transportation is going from 1.8 million up to 1.9 million, a 5.82%. And I want to commend the staff because as Mrs. Banko said, her new mechanical staff is doing a great job. That and keeping the bus replacements on cycle that she's doing is doing a great job to help contain those costs. We all good on instructional?
Good question.
Yes, sir.
How much do you have fuel factored into that number?
We have the fuel factored in there and we do have extra for the escalating prices. And as you know, nobody knows quite where it's going just yet.
Right.
What I am hearing is though recently is that it's supposed to start to level off as the price of a barrel of fuel has been coming down the last few days.
Okay.
So our undistributed. It is civic activities, which is the fitness center and the building uses. It's going from 30,134 up to 31,772, 5.44% or 1,638 dollar increase. Mostly due to the increase in minimum wage that's paid for the fitness center workers. Employee benefits includes health insurance, the retirement systems, workers' compensation, unemployment, and health insurance. It's going from 6.9 to 7.5 million, up 556,000, 8.01% increase. Our debt service, our debt service is our mortgage payment. It's going from 2.4 million down to 2 million, down 420,930, down 17.36%. But one thing I want to caution the board and remind them, as our debt service goes down, so does the reimbursement that we get from state aid to help pay for our payment, where they offer us a percentage of our projects in returned aid. When the debt service falls off, so does that state aid revenue. And our inter fund transfer is simply, it's $100,000 for the capital outlay that Mr. Bliss presented. It's money for the special education summer school where the district has to pay 20% of those costs. And it's also for supporting the cafeteria because it does not always have a break even analysis. So our total undistributed is going from 9.5 million to 9.7 million, up 1.43%. So this year, at this time, before we get to the budget workshop, we're looking at 32 million from last year, going up to 33 million this year, up 1.3 million or 4.05%. Now we're going to talk about revenues. And what I did here for the revenue presentation is property taxes in 21, 22 stayed static at the prior year's amounts by the decree of the board at 15,164,827. We're increased, I, our property tax cap, if I go to the maximum allowable limit to get to a simple majority is a 2.13% increase. This number is not etched in stone. This is my number for presentation. So the board is aware what that would look like. It's a 323,533 dollar increase for all the districts and properties in the, with, throughout the district. Our state aid is going from 12.9 to 13.7 million, up 6.01%. Federal aid, kudos to Mrs. Maxon for getting us back on track for our Medicaid billings. We're going from 30,000 to 75,000. 150% increase due to her office's hard work and her leadership. So thank you. Miscellaneous is a hodgepodge of things. Any included in that miscellaneous are, are, we share a part of the Erie County sales tax. That's the biggest part of it. It's going from 1.7 million to over 2 million. It's going up 293,000 or 16.94% at my projections at this time. Appropriated fund balance, I'm recommending a decrease at this time because there were some costs that we had thought we might expand that we didn't. So I'm looking to ask if you want to decrease that. So that's how it's presented, going from 2,630,000 down to 1.6 million, down 19.52%. Reserves at the moment, these are the reserves for the retirements and things like that. And that's going from 647,000 down to 355,000 or 291,000 for this presentation. So we're looking at our total revenues at this time. And remember, I'm still very conservative because we don't know what the legislature is going to do. And this year, that's a huge anomaly for state aid because we've never received such a generous budget from a governor before. So we're waiting to see how that's going to work. So we're looking at a 2.29% versus a 4.05% increase in expenditures. So we have some work to do. Any questions?
Laura, quick question. Quick question. So what's the number look like if we go out at 2% and not 2.13%? Just the, the perception of the 2% tax formula?
It's roughly 30,000 less.
Okay.
In taxes over all the houses. And as we saw, I want to point out, last year, we saw the impact to the community of the equalization rates. Because I know that there weren't, I know that our levy did not increase a penny. And I know people's tax bills varied from the year before. And I want to point that out. Last year was a perfect example of what the equalization rates do to your tax bill. So when people are like, well, your numbers weren't exact, that's because we don't know those numbers until July. We're lucky that we get them around the 31st of July, which I have to turn around my calculations to the county by the 8th of August.
So put another way, those numbers are out of our control.
Exactly.
What this board can control is the property tax percent increase and making sure that the, the budget that we're putting forward is fairly funded.
That's correct.
And I, and correct me if I'm wrong, on one of your previous slides, that really, I think one of the biggest increases in budget to budget needs, if you will, is in that area of healthcare and the other benefits.
Yes, that's true.
Yeah. And again, that's out of our control. And what we've continued to try to do is particularly with healthcare is work with our provider and our, our consultant to keep those costs low. We're faced with a 6% increase in health, healthcare costs currently, our current plans. Laura and I, along with our consultant, are going to continue to look at expanding those options to potentially lower costs and, but still provide our, our staff with, with quality benefits. We're also faced with an increase in our TRS and our ERS contributions as well.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So to sum it up, our total revenues are 33,384,726. At this point, our expenditures are 33,960,015. And our gap to fill in the budget process is 575,289. So this is our budget calendar. On March 22nd, there'll be a budget workshop right here in this auditorium. That's when there'll be some scenarios, we'll be planning in anticipation of March 31st, which is when we expect an on-time New York State budget. It typically has been the last several years. And we're hoping this year is no different because it makes our job much easier, makes the board's job of decision-making easier. April 20th is the Board of Education meeting where they will adopt a tentative budget. April 22nd is the, when I report to New York State, the property tax report pair. May 3rd at 7:00 PM will be the public hearing here in this auditorium. May 18th will be the budget vote, the middle school, high school auditorium entrance, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And this one visual sums it up. Your vote matters. Please come out and vote. Thank you.
I think that's it for presentations.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, everybody.
So is there, is there a request to withdraw specific items from the consent agenda? All right, moving to B. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, can consensus items be approved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
So this is the approximate position in time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance, can you raise it up just a little bit? Thank you. Are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate the representation status, for example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, etc. There's a two-minute time limit. Anybody? Man up.
So press that button, make sure the green light's on.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, perfect. Good job.
My name is Cameron Jacobs. I am a senior here at Eden High School. Being a student during the pandemic has already impacted us negatively. We have not been able to experience the exciting activities that high school students should. We as a senior class have missed out on countless extracurricular activities due to COVID. Our potters game has been a tradition for over 10 years. Our school is very big on traditions and stopping our potters game has been very disappointing to the senior class. Most of us have been looking forward to this since freshman year and are very disappointed that there's another thing that we miss out on. The potter puff game is not just a football game, it is a way to get all the students excited and gets all grades involved. It brings our school together. It brings our school together. Not only is the powder puff game a way to make kids excited and bring students together, but it also was a fundraiser. In 2019, the powder puff game was used as a fundraiser for childhood cancer. It was in honor of Georgia's great Zeta Smith, Edward Karras and Nathan Roberts, who are all part of the Eden community. Not only did it bring our school together, but also brought our communities together. In 2018, the powder puff game was also a fundraiser to ALS. The fundraiser was in honor of Mo Pi for a former, a former employer here at Eden who suffered from ALS. This year, powder puff game was going to be in honor for Amy, Amy Banks, a former high school counselor who passed away tragically in 2018. People can get hurt in any situation. The New York State Public High School Athletic Association has brought girls' flag football to Western New York this spring. 12 schools will participate for the first time this season. Neighboring schools such as Hamburg Frontier and Orchard Park will participate this spring. The New York State Athletic Association is allowing Western New York schools to have girls' flag football teams. How is our school not able to have a simple two-hand touch pickup game? Anyone can get hurt playing a sport. Throughout the years of having, having a powder puff game, there's been no injuries other than a few bumps and bruises. If our powder puff game is not going to be allowed, then why are other sports being allowed, knowing the dangers and injuries that can come with playing? I understand the school is trying to look out for our safety, but the powder puff game has no more, has no more dangerous than gym class or any other sport. Playing in the game is completely voluntary. We're asking you as a class of 2022 to reconsider this decision. This can be an opportunity for both the school and community to come together. There's a potential, a great fundraising opportunity for a good cause. Thank you for taking the time to hear me out. We just have, we just want to have some normalcy and a fun end to our senior year.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Okay. Moving on to new business, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of teacher aide Tracy Kehoe be accepted effective February 15th, 2022. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, Dylan Tylock be permanently appointed as a microcomputer repair technician effective March 21st, 2022. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Congratulations, Dylan.
And upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Angela Saro be appointed as an extended leave substitute teacher, replacing Mrs. Zigler, Zigler Smith effective approximately March 16th, 2022 through June 23rd, 2022. Salary is $120 per day for days one through 20 and $135 per day for days 21 through 89. Note, Ms. Saro is a current approved substitute teacher in the district. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Thomas Birmingham be appointed on probation as a school monitor effective March 17th, 2022 and ending November 16th, 2022. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level two, step two. Note, Mr. Birmingham will be moving from his current position of cafeteria monitor at Eden Elementary to the middle and high school monitor position. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Brianna McCabe be appointed on probation as a cafeteria monitor effective March 17th, 2022 and ending November 16th, 2022. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level two, step one. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Amanda Carney be appointed on probation as a confidential secretary to the director of finance effective April 4th, 2022 and ending October 3rd, 2022. Salary is $20.50 per hour. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Hannah Salisbury be appointed on probation as a cafeteria monitor effective March 21st, 2022 and ending November 16th, 2022. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level two, step one. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Felicia Plummer be appointed on probation as a teacher aide effective March 17th, 2022 and ending November 16th, 2022. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level four, step one. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following people be nominated for the Erie Tuboces Board of Education, Renan Ronald Catalano, Anita Ray. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Mrs. Karen Cornell, head election inspector, Mrs. Virginia Gunther, Mrs. Nancy Putney, Mrs. Bonnie Cordell, Mrs. Nyla Penfold and Mrs. Paula Simkowia be appointed as election inspectors for the annual meeting and budget vote on May 17th, 2022 at the rate of $13.40 per hour. And further authorized the district clerk to fill any vacancies in these positions, which may occur prior to May 17th, 2022 with individuals from the Board of Elections Inspector Personnel List. Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2022, 2023 school calendar be approved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2021, 2022 school, school calendar be amended.
Any discussion?
Second.
Any discussion?
I threw him off. I, I, sorry about that. So just a, just a, a quick note to explain why I'm asking for this calendar adjustment. You've heard previously that our K through six teachers will be adopting a new math program next year. And now we have an opportunity because of Mrs. Feldman's work and Mrs. Mrs. LaRosa's work to provide some professional development before the end of the school year. So that day will actually be a staff development day for our pre-K through five teachers in order for them to become acclimated with this, this new program, actually have their hands on it and then put it to use before the year ends. And then our sixth grade, sixth grade teachers will be two of them. I believe Mr. Servoni will also be involved and we'll just get subs for them. The rest of the district will be regular session.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a resolution dated March 16th, 2022 of the Board of Education of the Eden Central School District, Erie County, New York, the district declaring the district's proposed capital outlay project involving modest upgrades and improvements at the district's Grover L. Priest Primary School to be a type two action under Secra, Secra, Secra and authorizing and directing the inclusion of funding for such project in the district's proposed 2022, 2023 budget. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, bids for the capital project be accepted as follows. General trades contract 101 NCA construction LLC base bid $1,957,000. Window contract 102 Airheart Construction Management Services, Inc. Base bid $1,950,000. Plumbing contract 103 Mollenberg Betts, Inc. Base bid $145,500. Mechanical contract 104 MLP Plumbing and Mechanical, Inc. Base bid $1,429,000. Electrical contract 105 CIR Electrical Construction Corporation base bid $1,963,700. And alternate number four Eden Elementary facade lighting, $59,550. Second.
Any discussion? I've got a little bit on this. So the initial budget for this was 6.9 million. We came in at 7.5 million. So we're about a half a million into some contingencies as we start phase one. Windows came in about a half a million dollars above what they projected. And the other ones kind of equaled out between each other, but we think at this point in time, based on the current economy, supply chain issues and you know, the, the number of bids we had, we had a fair amount of people bid this project. So we had competitive bids. We think it's, it's best to move on. So similar to the previous capital project that we had, were we able to get a lot of alternates done? This one probably not so much. So that's kind of where we're at in regards to the capital project. I think next week, there's the walkthrough or something.
Kickoff meeting.
Kickoff meeting. Yeah. So we'll see how much actually gets done this summer and, and go from there. So any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the bid for asbestos project monitoring, air sampling and analysis services for the 2022 capital project be awarded to Sienna Environmental Technologies. Cost per hour for the air monitor technician is $54 or $64 depending on time of day. Additional expenses will include PCM air testing samples, which vary from $8 to $10 per test depending on urgency. Sunday and holiday charges for PCM testing is a $250 minimum charge. TEM air testing charges range from $85 to $105 per test depending on urgency. Sunday and holiday charges for TAT tests is a $500 minimum charge. For each sample, both a PCM and TEM air test must be completed. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the bid for materials testing for the 2022 capital project be awarded to Terricon in the amount of $27,388. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the bid for commissioning work for the 2022 capital project be awarded to ME Engineering in the amount of $21,800. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the attached list of library books and library reference materials be declared access and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2005 Tora Moore, Moore 4500D asset tag, that number be declared accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2002 Ford F-350 pickup truck with that bin number be declared accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following technology items be declared accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. Smartboards 11, televisions 24, laser jet 6, printer 11, VCR 1, tape player 1, projectors 4. Second.
Any discussion? Were these all in the basement?
Tape, tape player, can you please retain the tape player and show it to the, to the students?
That's a, that's a, yeah, a keeper.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Business report. I'm going to keep this one short and sweet, I promise. We received approval for our state allocation of the federal money for the learning loss grant under the ARPA funds. And we're still waiting as our after-school and summer school applications are still pending. Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. I first want to take a moment to thank Senator Galvin for hosting a virtual meeting with superintendents of the districts he represents. The senator is certainly a staunch advocate for children and for education. He afforded us the opportunity to share some of our budgetary concerns. And as Mrs. Feldman pointed out earlier, this is a, this is a very good budget season so far. And we are appreciative that foundation aid is being reinstated over time, but there do remain some other holes that need to be filled. I was happy to have an audience with the senator as it gave me a platform to talk about the importance of early education and early intervention, which you've heard me talk about before. I did mention to him that we are, we are hopeful for an increase in funding, state-level funding to support a full-day pre-kindergarten program. The senator was very positive in his response, although there's certainly no, no guarantees. There's some hope in that area. In terms of a state budget update, we continue to hear good things about, about the budget from Albany, including some agreement among the houses, but not final agreement yet. So don't get too excited about increasing, increasing the amount districts can allot to capital outlay projects. At this point, again, both houses have proposed budgets. They both, both houses have in their own way, plans to increase capital outlays to the $250,000 amount. But budget season is not done yet. The next step is, is negotiations with the governor's office, which will hopefully result in an on-time budget on April 1st. Okay. Very positive, very positive things coming out of Albany at this point. As Mrs. Maxson pointed out earlier, our special education program auditors are wrapping up their in-district observations and interviews. So we're grateful for their work and appreciative of our staff and how welcoming they were to these, to these folks who are going to try and give us some information and help us get better. It will take several weeks for the audit process to conclude. And once it does, the report, of course, will be shared with the board. Okay. I want to thank Mr. Cuddy, he and Ms. Horshol for their work out with the policy committee. You approved a, a whole sleeve of new policies earlier today. And that is our ongoing project to bring the board policy manual up to date. As you're aware, this has been a project that we've been working on throughout the year and that work will continue in the coming months as well. So thank you to both of them for their assistance. I also want to thank the board in its entirety for attending Monday evening's retreat where we got a great start formulating goals for the 22, 23 school year. I appreciate your input and direction as we set the course for future years. Thank you to all of our presenters today as well. Very informative. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to present some great things that are going on in your departments and your buildings. Very much appreciative. And I do want to say to you that for the first time as your superintendent, I do not have a COVID update. Thank you.
Student report, Connor.
So on behalf of the students, Mr. Lyons covered some of it. In the past, we had the motivational speaker. That was a few weeks ago. And that was pretty cool. We got to learn about everything in her life and what she did. Really humbled me listening to her speech. In terms of the NHS, we, we've been tutoring kids at the elementary school, helping them with math and things like that. And then for hospice, the NHS has been doing flower sales past few weeks for the proceeds to go to hospice. Presently, spring sports began this past week. So we've had good weather. Luckily tomorrow it's supposed to be 60. So hopefully everyone's outside. I mean, nobody likes practicing in the gym. Everyone likes practicing outside. We went outside for baseball today, which is pretty cool. So hopefully next week, weather's good. And yeah, the musical, we had that last week. Great job to them. We were able to see part of it in school, which is pretty cool. Got to see a preview. And upcoming, so we have some, some plans to finish up our senior year. We're planning our prom in terms of the entire school. We're looking at doing like an outdoor movie out on the turf for middle school and high schools. We'll have like a middle school movie and then a high school movie after. So it'll be something fun for the students to look forward to. We're trying to figure out some type of powder puff game, whether we can make it safer. And like Mr. Lyons said, we have the senior awards breakfast as well. And like Mr. Lyons said, we have the senior awards breakfast as well, so we've got a lot of things to look forward to. And yeah, it's great having everyone back in school. We're pretty much how it was before COVID, which I like, so I thank you guys for that. Thank you, Austin.
So now it's board report roundtable.
I'd just like to thank the admin team for the presentations tonight, and also the work you put on in regards to the district goals. It helped us a lot. You know, weeding through, I don't know how many were on the previous one and the last time we've actually done it, but the input you provided us gave us some guidance and, and thoughts as we, as we move forward for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year district goal, so thank you for, for your time and effort in that.
So I just want to congratulate the cast of Guys and Dolls again, because it was wonderful, but also it's just wonderful to be able to see the kids in person. And, and it's wonderful to hear of all the things that are going on, like the proms and graduation and all those things you're doing in person again, so I'm glad for all of you that you're having a pretty normal, I know maybe not a hundred percent, but much better, right? Than it was, so that makes me happy for you guys.
Anybody else?
Sorry about that. Budget workshop Tuesday, March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two, at seven P M. in the Eden Elementary Auditorium. The next regular Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, April twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven P M. in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. The Boses component vote date Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, at seven thirty A M. District Office Conference Room. Send me that, holy cow. And the annual budget hearing Tuesday, May third, two thousand twenty-two, at seven P M. in the Eden Elementary Auditorium. The annual budget vote Tuesday, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, from nine A M. to nine P M. in the middle school, high school auditorium foyer. Now, executive session, that upon the recommendation, where are we? We almost there, B. Right there, thank you. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss negotiations. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried. Thanks for coming, everybody.
Thank you.